I'm recording.
All right, I am also recording.
We are at our work session for July. I have no idea what the date is. Is it the sixth?
Today's July 6th.
There you go.
It's now 7:01 PM and this is the July council work session.
There you go. Takes two of us to do it.
In attendance would be councilperson Mark Camera, Cops Wolf McNamara, village fiscal officer Will Check, Jesse Shamp, village council, Eric Fisher, village planner, and Mayor Suther. There was a request to start off with a conversation regarding the impending tax budget. So, Mr. Will Check, we'll hand it over to you to have that conversation.
Two weeks ago it was emailed to everybody. If you don't have a copy to look at, I brought some. I have it.
Your email is still broken?
You'll never see it on the phone.
Yeah, there's a lot to it.
Do you guys want?
It transferred something.
I only made four copies.
Oh, that's fine.
You knew my email was broken? That's a doctor.
So, the annual tax budget. This is the tax budget for 2024. Next meeting, we will have to hold a public hearing on the tax budget. Purpose of the tax budget is to justify the need to collect our existing property tax levies and for participation in allocations of the local government funds at the county level. Tax budget focuses on general fund, debt service funds, certain operating funds, and then there's a list of miscellaneous funds. Property tax levies that we have in existence are listed on the very first page. We have no levies expiring until '25. I do believe it was a couple of years ago that you dropped one of the property tax levies.
In '21, I think, or '22.
Yeah, in the last year. It was our smallest.
Yes, so we have three voted levies and a one mil inside note gets allocated to us. I do believe '23, '24 is a reappraisal period. New rates going to affect next year based on collections for this year. Tax year '23, collections for '24. The first presentation in here is general fund. Most of this is based upon a trend and very conservative estimates. Our income tax currently is running 13% ahead. We're picking up a new school next year. I talked with the treasurer, the salaries for that building are estimated about $1,303, which gets us about $26,000 more in income tax. I only anticipate about a 10% increase in income tax. I'm still trying to hold back on that because I'm not sure what's going to happen with the economy and depending upon who you listen to. May not be recession, there may be recession. Nobody really knows. So, we'll refine the estimate when we work on the appropriation budget in the last quarter of this year. I'll take a closer look at the income tax and see how it's going at that point. I really don't expect any major increase in the property taxes. Just a small one. As with most voted levies, they're fixed income. Police department, we are still working on trying to bring our salaries up closer to the surrounding communities. Not so much to big cities, but some of the smaller or the townships in our vicinity. We'll see how this falls out in the fall as we look at things again. Right now, we're still looking at somewhere between 10 and 12 and a half percent increase form. I don't look for that to continue every year, although I'm kind of picking up on some hefty increases in FOP contracts. We'll see what happens. We'll get our hands on a few of those and look at them. Outside of that, there's really no significant changes going throughout. Built in about a 5% increase for inflation. Even the salaries down under general government are only looking at about a 5% increase overall. General fund, we're on target for a million four balance at the end of this year and dropping down to just over a million four at the end of '24. One of the things I'm looking at trying to do for '24 is transfer $250,000 to a new street improvement fund. Minerva Lake Road project estimates are between three quarters of a million to a million dollars. And we've got to get some money set aside. We're also trying to apply for some OPWC either grants or loans. In the past, villagers picked up loans for paving some of the streets. Hopefully, we can get a very low interest loan to help finance that particular project down there. Proposing another $150,000 to a pool improvement fund that's in existence. Just trying to set some money aside for when that finally takes place. I know that's going to be a big project, but there are limits as to how much we can do. So, at least having a little cash set aside helps. I feel that safety level for general fund balance is in the $1 million range. That's roughly once it's half of our budget. Actually, it's a third of our budget. Proposed expenditures for '24. So, that gives us a little bit of time to react to, say, a downturn in the economy and drop in income tax. But we would have to act much faster because that's only roughly a four-month figure.
You've been carrying a lot more than that for reasons.
Yes.
And we're starting to spend it out, so I understand that. But in the past, I thought I had heard that the recommendation was only two, two or three months expenditures.
Actually, GFOA recommends 50% of your revenue.
Is that an update?
That's about a six-month figure.
Yeah, I get that, but I-
That's been that for some time. We have both property tax and income tax. If we try to keep a million and a half, it gets a little harder because we've got some very expensive projects.
Yeah.
It's highly possible to climb back up.
Yeah, I was only asking because again, I recall the recommendation not being six months, but more like two from previous fiscal officers.
That's out of my wheelhouse, but two makes me sweat a lot more than six. I'm tentative and cautious myself, but I'll add further experts on that.
All I was looking for was a justification so that it's on the record and all that. All I can give you is trends that occur out there in the government sector.
Okay.
Okay, I, you know, what's the feel-good range? Six, I think, is a little heavy. Two, I think, is a little short, so we're in the middle.
Sounds good.
And again, income tax collections look good and so on. The balance starts to climb up. We do have a number of projects. We've got street projects based upon the pavement condition assessment that's out there that we have a number of roads that need more attention, but there's only so much we can do at the moment. And even if we were able to raise more money for roads, there are three or four five-dollar permissive income tax or motor vehicle license tax fees that could be collected, but it's not, might bring us $20,000 here.
Right.
So, I don't know. If you turn to page five, the debt service funds that are in existence were down to three. And one of them will actually get closed sometime this year or next year. I got to talk with Jesse as to whether we need to go to the court or whether because it's income tax money, we may be able to just buy ordinance, transfer it back to general fund. So, I'll check on that one. We have two debt issues that exist for '24. They're both OPWC loans and it's sewer phase two and phase three. Phase two loan was $433,000. Current balance at the end of this year is about $389,000. Our annual payments are 14, 5. And sewer phase three, that was a $300,000 loan, and we just started paying back on that one. And that one's $5,000 a year. So, those two debt service funds have one year's debt service as a balance going forward. So, again, if something happens, we're covered on the debt service for a little bit of time in there too. Waterline phase three was paid off this year. And there are actually three more loans in existence with OPWC. And that's, if you turn to page six, they're paid out of the street maintenance fund. And that is the 2006, 2009, and 2010 paving programs. Those were OPWC loans, and I believe all three of them were interest-free. And those payments are running about $12,400 a year right now. One will be paid off in '24, two of them will be paid off in '26.
Just in time for us to get new ones.
Yes. Hopefully, I don't think we'll get an interest-free loan. Hopefully, we can get a low-interest loan from OPWC to help cover Minerva Lake Road project. We got to work on that one. Mainly, the street maintenance fund is providing, in this case, a little bit towards the projects for road maintenance. We do have some money we can use towards future projects in that fund. Permissive MVL with the county engineer. That money is going to get used for Minerva Lake. Open it to the vicinity of about $140,000, $150,000 by the time we start construction. So, that'll help finance the project. The permissive MVL with the county will also be used, but that is, that's 50% of a five-dollar increment the county has. And it's a very old permissive MVL fee. Page seven, the fund at the bottom of the page or in the middle of the page, the TIF fund, this is the special revenue fund that receives the TIF dollars and makes the debt payment on the bonds. We will pay back the advance that occurred on a general fund last year. Half this year, half next year, and we'll start having some dollars in there after debt payments to be used in the TIF district for maintenance and upkeep of some things.
I thought it was half last year and half this year.
Pardon?
I thought it was half last year and half this year.
No, the original advance was the '22 because of debt service payment.
This isn't, this isn't where we miscalculated something?
Yeah.
And we didn't pay part of that in 2022?
Well, we had a debt service payment in '22, so the advance helped cover that payment. It will be repaid in '23 and '24, $115,000 each. We have three other operating funds. Storm sewer maintenance, which there's going to be a discussion about or an ordinance about implementing a fee for storm sewer maintenance. Hopefully, we pick up at least a quarter of this year and then a full year's revenue next year. And Flickinger's estimates on that is in the vicinity of just over $60,000 a year on it. But that does provide resources to help maintain storm sewer system. Waterline maintenance and the sewer maintenance fund are also part of this. Ordinance, I believe it's ordinance eight. Yes, also includes an adjustment to those rates, which we'll talk about shortly. Page 10 is a list of all the miscellaneous funds that have minimal operations or minimal expenditures throughout the year in it and a list of the capital project funds that are there. Last page, list of permanent improvement projects. It's a short list, but really need to get everyone to start thinking out five years at least on projects. Because most road projects, in years three and four, you're committing to the engineering feasibility of the project. When you're in the two- to three-year timeframe, you've got the engineering work taking place. And years one to two out, you're looking at getting the bids done and then committing to the project. So, we got to start looking out further as to what's going on and what needs to take place. And we're going to try to do that to come fall projects. It's a long planning process. It's just the speed of government, things that we have to do, we want to do these projects.
I would love to see like a calendar or something that we could, just a quick visual that we could post somewhere that kind of-
We'll work on that.
That'd be nice.
Okay.
Just so we can kind of see. Because I'm sure, we get questions, I get questions asked all the time. When is this going to be worked on? When is that?
This is going to recommend it happen publicly as well. That'd be excellent.
You know, but right now, the plan is for-
Yes, and you can actually look out 10 years where six through 10 are projects that are out there. They may change in order of preference, but-
Sure.
And of course, the cost too.
Right, right. But we have a pretty good list from Mike, don't we, of road projects and things like that?
Yes, and the condition assessment-
Yeah.
Report that was done outlines what's got to be done.
Right.
So, we've got that to fall back on. We still have some things to finish up with the bond proceeds such as the lakes. Getting that taken care of. We still need to get a maintenance building in existence. One of the things that looked at this year is pool and improvements there. So, that's not on the list yet because I'm not sure where they fall. So, we'll have to talk about that come September, October. And when we get the list put together, we can post it as to what's taking place.
That'd be really nice because it'd keep the whole community on the same page.
Yes, yes, and it gives them a good idea of what's going on and, you know, of course-
More tax dollars than work kind of thing.
Certainly the use of them because some of these projects are not cheap. You know, I have Minerva Lake Road on this list at the low end. I'm really hoping it comes in there and not the million-dollar range. Dredging of the north and south lakes. I know Mike is hoping that it comes out about a million and a half, but the high end could be $2 million. So, that's just been so long in the works that it's hard to tell how it's going to happen. So, thanks. That's the gist of the tax budget again. This is just a stepping stone towards the appropriation budget that we do in fall.
Thank you.
Cool, cool.
Thank you so much.
And then, did you want to, you had alluded to, but did you want to talk about the ordinances? The ordinance '08 and the other one that we just got today?
I'm going to jump down to ordinance 10.
Okay.
There's supplemental appropriation request. And this appropriation request realigns some of the existing appropriations and increased appropriations relating to the Jordan Road Storm Sewer Project that is going to get authorized here shortly. We have a few thousand dollars more in the ARP fund because of interest earnings that I need to appropriate and use for the project. And we're increasing the appropriations in the Storm Sewer Improvement Fund to come up to what the project's going to cost us and additional funds in case there are change orders. Dollar setting in the fund can only be used for storm sewer improvements at this point. So, if the project stays on target at its 427, 8,000, there will be some money left over for a future project there. But again, that's just to bring some things back in line. And I'm going to ask that you pass it or consider passing it on first reading so that it's in line with authorizing the contract for the project and it can get started.
What, you said that there were, there's more than just the update to appropriations for that project though. So, before we should-
I'm flipping down and trying to find-
Yeah, scrolling through because it's in the-
I think it's up.
It's in the packet after the code rewrites. I'm trying to scroll through.
I didn't print the whole packet because there were one ordinance was several hundred pages.
Yeah, that's what I'm scrolling through right now as well. I was just looking to get the highlights on what the other amendments to the appropriations were.
I think that's the, that was all that's in there. Two funds, ARP and the Storm Sewer.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, if that's all that's in there, I believe you and we can move on.
That is it. Now, any other changes that have to take place would be a certain ordinance. That one's too important to goof around, put other things in and hold up. The other ordinance that is in front of you is the one for Storm Sewer Fund, Storm Sewer Utility.
Yeah, right.
And there's an adjustment to the water sewer surcharges as part of this ordinance too. If I'm reading this right and I understand it correctly, the flats surcharge for water will go from $8.75 down to $7. The waterline maintenance fund has a significant balance in it that should take care of things for a while. So, we were able to drop that rate almost 20%. However, the rate for the sewer surcharge maintenance fund is going up approximately 10%. So, overall, it's dropping 10%. I wanted to at least point that out in here. So, sewer surcharge is going to go from 1625 to 18. Then we have the new fee for the Storm Sewer Maintenance Fund.
So, that is necessary because we don't have enough cash on hand to keep up with our stormwater utility maintenance schedule going out in the future. And the revised code doesn't allow us to move money back and forth between sanitary and water over to stormwater utility kind of with impunity. So, it has to be earmarked from the outset. So, this legislation creates that fund and creates a cash flow for future stormwater utility improvements.
Is this, I'm trying to think how do I ask a question? So, this isn't just creating a fund though. This is actually creating basically a utility as a, as a point of operations, right? So, we are, we are operating a stormwater utility in the same kind of fashion as Columbus operates sewer as a utility. There is a, there is a, I don't know if that, I don't know quite the word I'm looking for, like a point of commerce or a, an operating machine, if you will.
Sure, so the intent, I think, well, I know it is to have Columbus collect it just as it, just as we were doing our current ones.
Right.
Yes, I suppose the simplest term is yes, it is creating a new utility. And because we've created that new utility, we can now collect funds for it.
Do we, do we need any special, why, any special incorporation for that utility? We just need to name it on paper and it exists?
Correct, yep.
That's fine. Any other questions regarding ordinance '08, '20, '23?
I know that rate's been a long time coming too.
Yeah.
That actually started with Kim Foley.
So, that's been almost five years.
Does that, does that fall under the ordinance that we just passed about increasing rates?
Well, this is a new rate.
Okay.
So, there's nothing to base it off of.
Okay.
What I'm pointing out on the water and sewer surcharges is we're actually decreasing that one. So, it's going to help offset the increase that's going to occur because of the storms.
I just want to make sure we're not passing something that contradicts something else we just passed.
I checked that before.
Okay, good, thank you. All right, Mr. Will Check, did you have anything else you wanted to call out, speak to council about? Not at this time.
Do you want to go straight to amphitheater?
Yeah.
And then, we'll do the rest, go through everybody's committees and all that?
Yep.
Because this is where, so, we've been obviously working on it. We've done, some of the trees have been removed. We've had the masonry worked on. Concrete's going down next. We were, we had the availability to do it this past week. And I'm just going to say, I just wanted to slow down, stop, make sure we're all on the same page. There was a couple of questions in, with council over the last couple of weeks. What are we doing? What does it look like? So, that was number one. And number two, just making sure that we are, because this is a grant, I was concerned and a couple of people were concerned that we are following guidelines with bid requirements and not, are there, are there not? And that's why Jesse is going to answer some of these questions because the last thing I want to do is get a grant with something and then get in trouble because we didn't have, follow the right procedures. So, I'm not willing to do anything that is not following Jesse's recommendation, and he knows that.
Absolutely.
So-
So, yeah, the question became, if we do it kind of the ideal amphitheater in our head that is completed including electric, it would likely go over 50. And that would require a bid. And we don't really want to do that because it's a tiny project and it's impossible to get people to bid for it and-
It costs more that way.
It costs more that way. It's just going to drive the price of people to bid against it. So, we discussed, and we have the grant through the state, the state grant came in and there for fun. So, that's great. And so, what we discussed was, well, the purpose of the grant is to get a functional amphitheater. It doesn't require electric. So, what we could do is complete the amphitheater, finish the masonry, get it ready to go, have it essentially done, submit for our reimbursement to the grant program. And a year from now, if council wants to put electric in, that is, we feel comfortable, I talked with a partner at my firm who's done this for 30 years, very comfortable with doing the electric as a separate phase to the project later on if we decide we want it. So, this way, you get the amphitheater done. It's not electric, but that can later, we can later go back and put it in if you all decide you want to do it or not. It'll be different council, sort of lifting. So, doing that allows us to get the reimbursement for the grant, finish the project, spend the money, not have to do a bid, and have a functional amphitheater by fall.
Essentially-
Define functional.
Really, it's just a stage. Well, this-
And it's an acoustic amphitheater.
Here's a different, here's a different phase, so to speak. So, first part, and it's going to depend on, you know, the state has to give us the final approval. Spend the month. Now, regardless, the base amphitheater is repair and masonry work, which has occurred, right? That's about 10 grand.
Sorry, is there something that we're done in your meeting?
What time are we going to be done? Oh.
Probably 8:30.
8:30 at the latest.
Still got one more hour?
Yeah, sorry, maybe. Anyway, $10,000 towards the amphitheater, masonry work to stabilize the wall, make it look like what it is today. The next stage, which is very important, is pouring of concrete, which will lock in behind the existing wall, be able to sheet the water properly to the rear, which is into the stream area off that. If that makes the functional stage, you also have a ramp around the one side so that you can access it. Your equipment up to it will be ABA specific. There are a few other small parts that, that costs about 16 grand from our low quote, okay? So-
And we did get, we have more than, yeah, we've had a couple people.
So, that's our low quote for that part of the project. There are some other ins and outs that have to be done on the site. We obviously have to put in safety fence because there is a step-off which will fall into the ravine there. There's, you know, if we have a lot of people down there, that's a concern. So, we have to put a few, we have to put a fence line over on the one side, a couple thousand here. But essentially, the state may or may not rule that the repair work is viable because it's more about new construction, although I had a positive conversation. So, they may give us the money back on that one, but they still have the rule on it. Regardless, the 50 isn't, if I can hit 50 with the existing pieces, the only other piece we can do is we did talk about with a couple of contractors, putting, putting a type of pathway down in front of the, you know, from the asphalt down into the areas to help people walk up and down and get equipment down. It's going to be a little rough trying to get equipment, you know, larger pieces down there without wheels, right? And right now, it's a little bit rough. That's a little bit of drainage things to correct you, but that's all very minor. That's a little bit of drainage things to correct you, but that's all very minor. So that makes it a functional stage and surround the area and save for the public to use and to access at this point. So that's what you got, plus a couple of little paths at the top for additional ADA access to watch, you know, people pull wheelchairs or other things with their families up at the top, okay? Electric, bringing electric down to the site, getting it there and then having outlets, lighting, things of that nature, minimal stuff for safety and safety purposes, probably gonna be thirty-eight to forty-five thousand based on what we've seen from quotes. So all in all, the the whole project will break about seventy-five thousand, right? But the reason we saying that is that the money is there, you know, council, we can talk to council again, May, April timeframe, they wanna put electric in, we put electric in at that time next year and, you know, the state's money is there until June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. So this is what it is. But we, but in order to start to meet our certain bid threshold limits, uh we've gotta get the base project done this year. So but and that's our next step. Plus, it's important, especially given the amount of rain, uh the sooner we pour that concrete, the safer the the existing repair work on that wall will be. So I need to get that in and stabilize it and keep it safe.
So we could or could not get reimbursed for the electric part to it? So I mean, I I don't wanna lose the things that we've already done, I mean, I think that the concrete does need poured, I just, I don't want it to be a surprise next year in the event that it doesn't get covered and the whole, you know, and we had talked about this very minorly, but um you know, one of the big things for the amphitheater has been that for like arts in the park and things like that, to be able to have musicians down there, they're going to need electric. So we had even talked about if we had the money up to the fifty thousand is at least bring the electric to service to the location, but it would not be wired the rest of the way until after next year. Cause we would want to wait until the next calendar year in order to do that. So I just, I kinda stopped it because I felt like there was expectations from council that this is what was being expected and I wasn't exactly sure that it was, what we were doing was meeting your guys' expectations and I just did not want screaming that this isn't what we were expecting. So so we, so we all three talk, I mean, so all of us talked and we said, let's just bring it to you guys again, I know we've talked about it. You guys have passed legislation that we have the ability to spend up to, I believe, seventy-five thousand dollars, eighty-five thousand dollars on this. So you guys had, you guys had already done that, but that was still not good enough for me, I I wanted to make sure you guys knew where we were, what we were doing because it has been asked every single month, um where are we, what are we doing? So electric may have to wait till next year and it really may be something that we foot the bill for if we don't get reimbursed, so maybe we will. Thirty-eight to forty-five thousand.
That's the electric side.
Yeah, which is huge.
It's waiting on electric because it makes, because with the electric in the project.
All once.
All at once, right? Now we have, if we if we do not phase out the project, I'm trying to be careful with my language, right? If we do not phase out the project, then then we take it to bid.
Yeah, right.
So.
And our concern with that is that it may be more expensive and will slow it down.
It's all of the above, actually. You're not gonna get somebody to bid on electric and you're not gonna get somebody to bid on, a a concrete person is not gonna bid on the electric, you're gonna get a general contractor, basically.
What I was trying to do is essentially be your general case, because we really, it's a fairly simple project. We've got, we've got simple things to do, we don't need anything engineered, we don't need any architects involved, right? At the moment, we go through the bid process.
You do.
We start getting, starting to stay in plans, we, you know, so you've got soft costs which add money to it. And then someone's gotta be the general, well, general contractors add a fee to the whole thing, right?
Sure.
They're gonna add ten, it's gonna add ten to twenty thousand dollars without any problem on the project.
In my opinion, I'm not concerned about the timing. The timing, if it took two years, the issue that we have had, as you can see with the maintenance garage, the bid, getting the documents for it to be bid out has been the biggest issue and biggest problem. And it's a matter of, you're gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars getting bid documents and engineers and stamped this and stamped that. It's not the time, it's the amount of money you're gonna have to get to get it to bid.
Maybe not getting one to bid.
And then not getting a bid.
Right, right, okay. So the concern is the soft costs.
The soft extreme cost.
Okay.
Yeah, it's it's the, it's the, and and the, and you may do all of this still without a bid and you are in the same position.
Provided we are clear in 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 calling it a phased approach and we're not exposing. We're clear that that council will make a final decision if they want electric next year.
Correct.
Right, there's no like, there's no wink wink, it's literally, you guys are gonna have to vote on it again.
Right, right, yeah. If the council's gonna make a a decision next year, essentially.
So.
Just to wait a year or?
No, you have to wait till May, April to make a decision, the next council can make a decision. So, but the but the first part here, the concrete and everything's gotta gotta go in.
Or it's gonna end up destroying the first thing.
So there's no way to expedite the electric, is what you're saying?
Well, the electric part is something the next council can make a decision on.
She's just asking, can we start that process in February, March, or does it have to be?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Just after the first.
I can include that as part of the budget for twenty-four. It still takes council's authorization, right?
Yeah, but let's just, I just, you know, if we do it faster, that would be great.
We're not gonna have someone come back and say, well, you spent eighty-five thousand on this project, cause that's what you requested from.
No, no. We only have to spend, no, it's it's not like that at all, we we spend, it's a reimbursement.
Right.
So we get two-thirds of the money back in twenty dollars.
Right, but any, once we go over fifty, if we apply for, let's just say seventy-five thousand, we've already gone over fifty, can someone come back to us and say, no, your project was seventy-five, you should have bid it all out? Because that's what you're applying.
As long as you have good faith estimates.
Cause that was exactly my, that was my.
As long as you have good faith estimates before you start that, that the scope of the project is under fifty, you don't need to bid it.
And I would say, I would say this, live in our worst case scenario that you have to pay for the electric on your own without submitting for reimbursement, it's still a good deal, it's still saving money compared to having to pay a GC upfront to do all of it, you're gonna lose. So that, you know, that that's the worst case scenario.
You're gonna spend over thirty thousand dollars getting architects in and getting to the bid process.
If you do that, there's no concern at all.
So council can make that decision next year with leading councils.
So at this point, I I guess to move forward, the the main thing is the concrete's gonna get done, um and then the fencing is gonna get done and then that might be the extent of, and whether or not we have a lot, some some grading and things like that.
My only thing is, is like the last time, I remember talking about it, is my concern was pouring the concrete that would clash with the current stone. So I care about that.
Clash with the current stone.
So it was just like.
There was some brown tan, yeah, there was a different one.
Yeah, but not the stamping, stamping's been, the experts have told us no stamping.
No stamping.
No, they'll do it, they said, so essentially.
And then just a gray concrete so we can accentuate the original stone.
It's going to be a broom, broom cinch and it's gonna be, yeah, it's gonna, it it's, I, we'll check with the contractors about, you know, coloration. They may add a little bit, but.
Yeah, I would assume it's gonna look like the concrete that we just poured over at the.
Yeah, like I feel like a gray like works well with the.
I mean, that's kinda what I was, I guess I never thought about the color, I just assumed it would be the same.
It's not gonna be blue, not gonna be black.
Why not?
Even like, even those like colored brown ones.
Yeah, oh, I don't like that, yeah. I agree.
Okay, correction, make it, we'll make it, so.
Yeah, just, I agree, just a match.
Like Joanna needs it, just gonna do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I don't think we need anything from them to just move forward with, except the PO and stuff for Brad.
Yeah, we just get the PO crew and we'll move forward.
There's already part of mom proceeds are appropriated.
Yes.
For the amphitheater.
So yeah, we should be to go on that, okay. Next, do you guys wanna start through agenda then? Do you guys wanna do, um or just go around the room and let everybody do their committees?
Yeah, we just could, that that sounds good to me.
And if you don't have anything else, you can, I mean, that's on you.
Alright, JP, anything for uh, what is your committee services?
Yeah.
Do you, you want me to kinda go over where we are on the ones? Okay, um or I can just do it at my, I have a whole list of, mine's gonna include streets and everything.
Yeah.
Mine's gonna include yours.
Rec- recreation and parks.
Yeah, nothing, nothing really worth doing to report at this point.
Still waiting for MKSK to kinda get back with us, is that engineering company?
The, had a great time with the pool yesterday. Did you have anything for streets or we just let the mayor cover that?
We're gonna let the mayor because there's just, it's a whole thing.
Finance is quick and easy, cause we already talked with.
You guys are all cheating, this isn't fair.
I know, it is.
It's it's all landing on your head.
It's all gonna land on, he has a lot.
Mr. We got for safety.
Yeah, so safety, safety had a meeting um at the end of June and it was pretty productive. We discussed um setting up and possibly trying to arrange a um safety, a public safety enhancement package including another flock camera because we can lock in a good deal uh because their rates are increasing at the end of summer, I think the exact dates. Also a um wanna, what I I'm I'm getting information on these radar signs to see if they can be mounted on other things and if that would be, you know, warranty voiding or anything like that, I'm still waiting on a response. I realize it's been a couple more days, I will email them when I get home tonight about, hey, just following up. And the last piece in the safety package is going to hopefully be a um one of the little speed monitors that we had to rent last time from another municipality so that this time we will be able to have and maintain our own and possibly explore rental as a potential source of uh village revenue. We also had a brief discussion with plan, with our um code enforcement gentleman. And I reassured him that we are going to be, when we get to the permitting aspect of the code rewrite, going to be much more purposeful and specific with, you know, things like um sidewalks, driveways, things like that so that we can just really take any ambiguity out of it, save headaches for everybody on both sides of the interaction. So that's the that is the gist of it.
And as long as we have, we will probably have to do an appropriation for a couple of different things, um.
I figured that the big safety package done up was one.
Yeah, so the one was about three thousand dollars and that was for the box that would go, you know, we move it from street to street to street.
Yeah.
Um that I think there's no, I mean, I, we're not voting right now, but I don't think there was, I think that was pretty much everybody was on board with getting that. The other one, what did we say, it was like se, was it seventy-five hundred?
For two of the radar signs, the one.
For two of the radar signs, yeah, so we had talked about, I know, um.
And I guess, I guess how many we want will depend on the act, the response from radar sign, whether we can move them or or whatnot.
Right, so I think part of it, um what I would like to see is when we do the appropriations or, not the appropriations, but when we bring it to you guys, bringing you guys, did you talk about the flock cameras?
Yes, I did, I said that we, that we need to kinda move on this.
Correct, so, and that's gonna be determined whether or not we want one or two. Um and again, we're not voting on anything right now, but if anybody has some recommendations and I'm not trying to hijack your thing, but we need to know whether or not people want one or two so we can get the, so we can get the ball rolling.
Yeah, we currently have two.
Correct.
So are we talking about?
Two additional.
Two, up to, up to.
Um there's a, there's a large request for one as we have the three schools in that general vicinity, getting that particular area locked in, um having the radar or the readers, that was the main reason for the one. The discussion of the second one was basically there's one more out and correct me if I'm wrong, cause you guys were in there.
Well, there's Ponderosa and.
If you put one over in that area, you pretty much have the entire village locked. So other than Jordan Road, anybody that went in or out, like if you had somebody leaving with a stolen vehicle or whatever, they're not gonna, they're gonna have to pass a camera one way or another.
Yeah, that would be nice.
And they are, they are sent directly to um the officers when when the flock does go off, so they would know.
Yeah, they're like a force field around the neighborhood that anyone who's a criminal, when they run those tags that come through in Minerva Park, it's spare time data, Farview Police knows about it, you could address it and stop a crime before it even happens, especially with the new school systems that come in here on Farview Road, um the chief suggested it'd be a wonderful idea and I have to agree. Uh we have one down here of Minerva Lake Road that actually stopped, um I believe it was a motorcycle that got stolen, it had no license plate, but the flock camera knew exactly what it was. And we have one on the other side of Lake, what street do you live on?
Lakewood.
Lakewood, um excellent in the neighborhood. Farview Road being, that's the main entrance um to this neighborhood and schools, that's a definite. And then I uh believe we talked about.
Ponderosa, I thought is what.
Yeah, yeah, that other biggest thing, right?
Ponderosa, it's another, it's another fair.
That, and we can curb a lot of criminal activity by having these, um, me and David before it, like, I think it's a great idea.
So the the biggest part is whether or not we wanna move forward on one or two, that is.
The big issue is data, is data storage.
How much is it?
I believe it's, I was.
I think it's five thousand for two, twenty-five hundred dollars each.
But that's a, that's a, that's a special promotional offer right now.
And so, yeah, we have to do it, they've already increased once.
Where the rates are going.
They're gonna go up to like three grand or something a camera um next year, so.
We definitely, yeah, the chief, I mean, the schools, I think, are in, are, you know, I don't wanna say they're, my understanding was they wanted one over in that particular area, I don't wanna say that the school did, maybe it was us that were having that conver, I don't mean us, but.
My prior would be the school first.
That's super easy because you're not clogging up traffic when they're exiting and you're just, you're still, it's like a parked police officer minus.
Exactly.
So we have one, we have still one on the, on the west side.
You're talking about Maplewood, Lakewood? There's one Maplewood, Lakewood entrance, exit.
As you enter in to the village on Maplewood, it's it's right there at the, at that Maplewood Cleveland intersection.
I don't disagree with the Ponderosa in there, but I feel like we saw the chunk on that side that's not covered.
Where at?
Minerva Lake.
Like Minerva Lake Road.
I think, and don't quote me on that, but maybe that's what they're talking about, is putting it at that triangle right there. We're saying Ponderosa, but I don't think they're actually talking about all the way over, I think they're talking about like Minerva Lake Road in that little square to where if they come in that way or out that way.
East, east shore.
Do you remember exactly? I I'm making, I mean.
You say Ponderosa, that's one sixty-one.
No, it's, yeah, no, we're not talking about.
Ponderosa one sixty-one, the entrance on Farview to schools and then.
I didn't think they were. I didn't think they were talking about the entrance, I didn't think they were talking about Ponderosa entrance, I thought they were talking interior.
Yeah, I think it's more.
Again, so so my question is, should we get a third one and get that us, the busier of those two entrances, either with the, I would assume it's Minerva Lake Road covered.
The, the.
Minerva Lake Road is kinda that cut through, right?
Yeah, yeah.
But if you're the company, you know.
If if the council at large feels that we can, you know, support at, you know, with our votes if our financial, you know, um team feels that we can.
Four is basically ten grand. We already have two.
Yeah.
And that's my understanding is it's like ten grand.
Yeah, I'd be willing to go for every entrance to Minerva Park, but we need to make sure that it's basically sustainable.
Ponderosa, eventually, yeah. Right.
Let's just cover it.
I was just gonna say, like, say if.
Now, this is on, I'm just bringing, we are bringing it to you.
So.
May not cover every entrance.
But I, I feel like um while I may not necessarily hold this pos- position, I do think that we are very full speed ahead and there has been no discussion of any privacy concerns, right? Or any discussion of uh that sort of nature. Cause this did come up the last time we talked for our cameras and before we expand a program, I feel like that it's at least worth it to say that some of our residents may not want more cameras in the village.
Can I ask you the question?
For some full, and for some full disclosure, I am a little more gung ho currently as my car was stolen less than a month ago.
Yeah.
Sure.
So I I do need to be transparent on that, I am, yeah.
But, but these are not things that would have stopped your car from being stolen.
No, it wouldn't.
No, I I I.
They would, they would. Somebody would have pulled in the neighborhood and they would have had either um fictitious tags or say this was a criminal, that would have prevented that person.
Sure, if they, if, if the license plate on their vehicle was reported stolen
Yep, yeah, yeah, right. Right, yeah, yeah.
Or the person registered to the vehicle had a warrant or uh right, there there are, right, there are things that may have flagged, but it is also likely to use your unfortunate situation
Okay, yeah, it's like local transparency on that.
that that person came in on a clean car, had no open warrants, they did what they did and they drove away. So these are not cure-alls, these are, it is not, in my opinion, like having an officer sitting there
No.
because it has no reaction, it's only going to react to open warrants, it's not gonna stop a speeder, it's not going to stand in the middle of the road and wave anybody down.
So here's my question with all of that, so since you're saying, like, it's not gonna stop all of these things, what are these privacy concerns? We can't even like get a hundred percent of the criminals.
So, well, hey, well, you'll never get a hundred, I'm just saying, so there are.
One of the priorities in terms of.
The only thing that I will say, not to.
What can is reduces your privacy.
Nobody has access to these, these data records or anything like that.
Um far as privacy goes, if you drive down the road, your privacy is, your public roadways, there is no privacy.
I don't dis, like I said, I am not necessarily the one who.
Oh, no, I I got, I I definitely, yes.
I'm just telling you that in preparation, right?
And I just, I'm a hundred percent our fair.
Before I had more than one resident fill my ear with their privacy concerns
No, I remember, but I.
and I just wanna make sure that we have that discussion before we say go ahead.
Right.
There was some heated discussions on Facebook, I remember that.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Oh, I I I got two phone calls, so. Um the one thing, there's a lot of different municipalities around our areas that are in fact increasing them and do have them as well. So for example, when you do have a stolen car and you do report yours, you can only hope that they go through a neighborhood that does have them. So being a neighborhood that has them, I'm more than fortunate, I I I think we're fortunate that we have some of those because all it takes is another municipality to have them and your car could be recovered. another municipality to have them and your car could be recovered. And they have recovered cars.
Yeah.
Like I'd be for those guns locators, those little triangular things you want to.
Well, the, the.
Just to stop with that gun, gunshot to fire or whatever. And they're saying, yes, it was gunshot, it's over here.
Yeah, it's over here, that's what I.
It's not the best neighborhood you're saying.
You're, you're, that's so funny.
Here's a great example kind of to that in the sense that if you pulled into Ponderosa and you were a registered felon or something like that, we would know about it instantly. Could possibly prevent the crime.
If the cars, yeah.
If the car's registered.
Yeah, yeah, it it does not, it doesn't give someone, no, no, no.
It's not a prevent crime.
It's an open warrant.
It does, it'll give you an open warrant, it will not tell you if someone is a felon.
Right.
Correct.
But again, it's a warrant.
So we, we should be clear.
A measure of security that we can have for our neighborhood, you know, to keep it safer.
Yes.
So that's privacy concerns involved.
No, I'm saying that that would be, eh, eh, yes, I would be concerned if it, if it read the plate and popped to our officers. Hey, a convicted felon just showed up because that's not how criminal justice is supposed to look.
Wildly unconstitutional.
Yeah, right, I.
So, so in order to get this, um.
That's an official opinion wildly unconstitutional.
Does anybody, this is, I'm just, we're not, again, this is not a vote, this is not anything. Does anybody want me to bring legislation to the table at this point and you guys can discuss the amount of money you want to provide towards it? Do you guys want to sit back and wait for a little bit longer?
Bring, bring the legislation because that will make the conversation happen.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Right, if you don't bring the conversation, we're just gonna wait for the legislation for the conversation.
Okay.
We're gonna go with to have this done before hopefully that school.
Right.
Correct, so I'm going to, I will have it, um, actually, I will work on this tomorrow and try to get it on the agenda for the first reading. This upcoming.
Maybe it helps us, because if we have to, if, if we know the prices are going up towards the end of the summer.
Yeah, we do need to.
We don't wanna waive readings, we wanna go through the whole thing to allow for the conversation to happen and us still get that deal, so, yeah, let's get it on that.
Right, I agree, I agree. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, let's do it.
We'll start the discussions.
Yeah, for sure, for sure.
So the chief, just for clarification, the chief recommended two additional ones?
Um, that I don't remember. Did, was he actu- I, I'm, you'd have to listen to it, I don't wanna say he recommended it. He definitely.
Yeah. He saw the value of two.
He saw the value of two but recommended one, is, or really request, maybe I'll say requested one. Um, and I don't, again, I don't wanna speak for him, he will be there Thursday. You guys are more than welcome to specifically ask him for that, but um, it was brought up from him. We did not bring that to him. He brought that to me.
If anybody thinks that, you know, if if my behavior is going off the deep end because of my state, please call me on that. I wanna.
No.
No. I, I don't think so. So here, my, my only additional thought in this is that we have seven entrances.
No. Mm-hmm. Yes.
Right, if we're already talking, taking that to six, I don't see the point in not taking it to seven.
Right. That's, yeah, I agree with that.
Right, that's the, that's the only, right, eh.
Yeah, I agree. I don't, I don't, it's a lot of, yeah.
We, we, we're now, we're, and we're in for a penny, I think that the program has, to my understanding, been generally successful, right?
Yeah.
Because we have, we have apprehended people, it's my under- it's my understanding that we have apprehended people, gotten bad guys off the streets with these things.
Yes.
And that all sounds great. And if we're gonna do more, we might as well just bite the bullet and and, you know.
And then just not.
Do the whole swat.
The trend in this area is not crime going down right now, so.
Right.
That's a great way to say it.
So we might as, we might as well do a thing.
I'd love to see.
Yeah, that was.
Yeah, it, yeah, it's, it's a great way to, it, it's a great way to passively increase our ability to monitor, right?
Well, practical statement.
Because if the, you know, the violent offender warrant pops, then we can react.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
Even if our officer is on the other side of the village, just looking for speeders on Minerva Lake Road, he can hustle on over to wherever it.
They drop what they're doing, mm-hmm. Which com- yeah, which camera. Um, so I will talk to chief about that tomorrow, um, and see if we can get legislation ready to go. And then, again, I do not disagree with having some readings on it as well. Um, the schools, however, I will say that you're only gonna get the first two in July, maybe the, the school's gonna open by our second or third meeting in August. So that's gonna determine if you wanna do it as an emergency or if you just wanna do all three readings. You guys do what you wanna do. Um, but keep that in mind, school opens about the twelve fifteenth, something like that.
The school, the school opening, it, it's only a concern in that if this is a service we are providing to their benefit.
Yeah. Correct, and it's, it's, yeah.
Sure, it's not there on day one of, of the school year.
Right.
But the school opening doesn't impede our ability to install it, it doesn't impede our ability to do any of that kind of stuff, so I.
It's coming. We don't know, yeah, who knows.
Can we, can you, can someone bring to next council meeting some of the dates worked backwards from when fees are going up? So we can just have that conversation.
Yes. And I'm sure chief has them, um, and maybe I can even, if I can get that tomorrow, I'll even just email that out, just so you guys are aware.
Yeah.
If, if not, I'll bring it. We'll bring it on Thursday. Our chief will have it. We can just ask him.
Beautiful.
That's everything I had, so I monopolized everyone's time.
Oh, cool, no, that was a good conversation.
Thank you, oh, it was, it was good.
Was part of your conversation anything about the shelter and the camera or?
No.
No.
Cause while I'm working on all that.
I'd be perfectly honest, I've never loved the idea of the shelter cameras because, I don't know, I I might be a little weird that way, but I don't wanna have a birthday party with a camera right in front of me.
I don't think the one of the cameras to point on the shelter, I think it was the basketball court was the answer.
It's only a two camera door.
Well, that, yeah, well, at any rate, that was not part of the discussion.
Yeah.
I can tell you where we are in all of that, well, the first part of all of that. Once, again, I have a list of four billion miles long. Ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Let's do it.
Jordan Road sewer project, um, and you can chime in anywhere on here, but uh, we did get the bids.
Thanks.
You guys had legislation in front of you for that. Um, if it's not, it was emailed out later today. Um, the lowest bid was four hundred and tw- I'm making this number up, four hundred and twenty sixish thousand dollars. The, um, legislation in front of you is gonna be much higher than that. It is gonna be at the five fifteen number because we don't know what we're gonna come into once we get in there because it is a lot of digging, which is twenty percent. It doesn't mean that we're going there, it just means I don't wanna have to come back to you guys if we have a small change order. Um, but the low bid is in fact four hundred and twenty six thousand. This was recommended by our engineer that we go with the lowest. It is not somebody we've worked with before. Um, the second lowest was somebody we did, but we're going with the lowest. Um, so the, as far as that goes, we are still waiting for the surveys to be done and the legal descriptions to get to you. But we should, we are in like a quick timeframe to where, um, I did ask the question whether or not we should waive re- if we, if they recommend it. If it's gonna take three months, I don't wanna waive readings because it just makes people mad. Um, but they do believe that we can probably get that stuff turned around pretty quickly. Um, so I am going to ask that you guys do and that's gonna be up to you guys, whether or not you wanna waive, waive the readings and do it as an emergency. That way they can move forward as soon as they're able to. Um, next meeting, go ahead.
We need those legal descriptions for the access agreements.
Correct.
For the.
Correct, correct, so.
Yeah.
So they're, I have them ready. They're all the same except we plug in.
Yeah.
Correct.
This, so I just keep those.
Yes, and Mike is almost done with that and we're just waiting. Honestly, we are still waiting for DynoTech for the surveys. Um, he was supposed to reach out to them today, so we might have an answer tomorrow, um, as far as if they're on schedule, when they're coming.
We have visual confirmation that the surveyors have been to the property.
I, I have, I'm not going, yeah, so Mike is gonna confirm all of that stuff and find out timeline. And if I get that before next Thursday and there isn't a need to, then I'll tell you, let's at least do two readings or something like that. We'll add it on. Uh, but at this point, I'm telling you that I know, um, I live there, so I don't wanna be the person to say that. But I think the other residents would appreciate that since it's been so long, but it's on you guys.
This is an expense we've known of.
Correct, correct.
It's an expense we're worried about, it's a project that has.
Correct, exactly.
And have paid for expeditiousness.
Right, but if.
Nobody's, nobody's doing anything to intentionally slow this down.
Right, but if, if for some reason it's gonna take them, you know, if we've gotta delay somewhere else, why not do the reading? So, I totally agree with that. Um, the potholes were filled. Stop bars is something else I wanna start talking about. We do have some stop bars, um, that are pretty light and you can hardly see them, especially on like Farview. I would like to talk about getting some of those done again. And we have the two new stop bars over, um, by the stop sign there, so, you know, i- is it something our maintenance team can do? I'm not a hundred percent for sure. Um, it might just be easier to call, um, Paul Peterson and have him come out, so we'll figure that out over the next few days. Um, this morning, they were supposed to be out there to spray. I have not been out there to make sure that they sprayed, but they were supposed to go out this morning and spray for clover. Um, I'm really just telling you guys at the pool, it was horrible. Um, when I walked in, John asked me. Uh, we've, we've done the email thing, so I called him, got it all handled. He was supposed to be there at between six and seven this morning. Um, we got two trash bids so far. They are due tomorrow. Bid opening is tomorrow at one P M. So we will get all of that stuff done. Um, we have the two normal ones that we always get, but we might get more tomorrow. As far as leaf bid goes, um, we have not received any. We never got any. We are way past that date. Um, so if anybody has a recommendation, we do not have a leaf bid contractor at this point. I have, I reached out as a courtesy to three different people that asked me for the information and none of them responded. They all three have had the exact same response from me. Um. I want to say I have, I, I, yes, I have, I have reached out to the three. So, you know, I know one was going through, you know, some issues and I, I, I don't know, I, I, nobody has responded to me. So, um, that's where we are in leaf bid now. I mean, I'm sure if we begged somebody or this or that or whatever, but, um, and I shouldn't say that. I, I'm really surprised one hasn't, the, I'm surprised neither one of those two has done anything because we're now in July.
Agreed.
But I know that they like to see how much gas prices are and all that and drag it out, which is, that's, we don't have anybody to do leafs. So if anybody wants to reach out to some leaf people and they wanna find one, it's my understanding, Jesse, it's pretty ac- is this accurate to say that because it is under fifty thousand dollars, we've already, we didn't even need to do a bid. Um, if we only get one person to submit, we can move forward with that one person. Okay, so that's where we are with that.
Yeah.
So, um, that's that. Yeah, so I will bring you guys legislation and, and maybe we'll even start legislation and just have X's and, cause we know it's coming if we think we can get one. Just so we aren't waiving readings and passing it as emergency because we wanna do it and we'll do that with the trash bid as soon as it comes in.
It might be worth reaching out to the two people who've been our, our competing whatevers and say, hey.
Yeah. We still don't have one.
Yeah, we don't have like.
Does my dead township do with pickup?
I'll send you an email.
No. Yeah, yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Do they do, when then, do they do lift pick?
The big concern, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna repeat this to everybody right now, um, the big concern I do have with leaf pickup is we had an issue with drop off last year. They did not want us to drop anymore. Um, so I believe we dropped to Ohio Mulch and he basically said, and we had talked about this a little bit. Um, they basically said if they are not in a Minerva Park vehicle, they will not be allowed to dump for free. So that was the last conversation I had with them on multiple occasions.
Can we make some Minerva Park door act?
So that was kind of where we went with that, but I wanted to make sure with.
And justify them?
Well, the only thing.
You just throw it on there and they take it out.
But I wanted to triple check that there is no liability. If they are in an accident from the village to there, are we liable for it? Because.
Yeah, of course, but you can put a contractor.
So he had said he's a contractor.
Minerva Park, and he is a contractor.
That's really smart, you just have like ten of them, and it's like.
Yeah.
So. Correct, so, that was my concern because I, I just, I just wanna make sure that the village is covered, that we aren't doing something, um, so.
I would make sure that, uh.
Me and John go away.
What's his, you know, the, wherever the dump place is.
It's on Westerville Road.
But that's gonna fly for them, like, we shouldn't tip that hand too deep.
Yeah. No, I believe that that, no.
But like, what do you need for it to be a Minerva Park vehicle?
Correct.
Just, just to check all those boxes.
It has like no markings, I can't tell what it is, it's like a guy dumping.
Right. Yeah, yeah. Right, well, they do that because, you know, just general contractors do have to pay.
Sure.
And if they're doing it for the village, who's to say that they're not doing it for their own personal and then they're letting them dump? So there's a whole thing, I, you know, you learn a lot when you do this, so that's that. Um. We are currently, you probably got an email about the S W M P thing. Um, I, Mike Flickinger working on that. Okay, you don't.
I do those.
Um, there are numerous reports that are required every single year. Um, as most of you guys know, there's not, we don't have a magical person that does it, so I guess I get to do it. So as far as annual reports, A E P reports, M S four reports, S W M P reports and all of those, I get to the fun thing of trying to decipher between what is this? Um, and unfortunately, a lot of them were never done, um, in the last eight years.
S W, stormwater in basement?
A storm water maintenance plan.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So there are actual, um, we've got FEMA reaching out to us because we need a hazard plan. The village doesn't have any of these plans. Um, these were never established, uh, yeah, don't even ask. It has been, uh, uh, two years of this. Um, so, we are working on a lot of the different reports right now that are due. We actually did get all of the Ohio EPA reports in there. That was fun. Um, Mike worked on several different things for me. He got some different reports done for us. Um, we do have a couple outstanding. I know, um, councilperson cost got some of those as well, so we are currently working on those, but we have no old samples because they were never done. Um, fence, we are in the process of getting the fence installed between the shelter and the person's house right next door. We have the fence picked out, um, it is all on backorder and as soon as we get that, we will get that fence installed. Um, our maintenance team is, the pro- the plan is for our maintenance team to actually install that and that is moving right along. As you guys then know, the shelter is built. Um, they are supposed to be back out tomorrow. They had a couple little pieces that were missing still. Um, but I have been in contact with them and I believe the finished product is supposed to be done tomorrow. Um, if there's any date or anything different on that, I will let you guys know. September twenty first is gonna be our first responder night. We are not doing National Night Out this year. The reason we're not doing National Night Out is we compete with all of the other municipalities. We don't have a fire truck, we don't have a, anything like that. So we are gonna do September twenty first and try to get Westerville, Blendon, some of those to be able to come because the kids love the fire trucks, the kids love the EMS. Um, there's some other places that we've reached out to where we have already worked on getting, um, some food trucks and some different things like that, so we are well on our way. Um, Leah's heading that up and she does it every single year. September twenty first, five thirty to seven thirty and it's gonna be here in the parking lot. Um, as of right now, we've not had any updates on mosquito things in our traps, so that is awesome. The, um, we are currently having a little bit of an issue, um, potentially, we might need, well, we need another grant writer. Um, is the nice way to say it. We have a couple projects that we are in need of a grant writer. Um, so if anybody has any thoughts, recommendations, other than that, I'm gonna reach back out to Mike and see if he has any recommendations cause our grant writer is unable to assist us at this time. Um. October twelfth, which is one of our council meetings, um, our plan is to do our grand opening for the residents to come in. That is a night of a council meeting. We're thinking of doing like from five to seven P M, letting residents come in, check out the new building, do tours. Um, maybe do like an actual ceremony type thing. We've reached out to some boy scouts, girl scouts, things like that, lowering the flag, doing, um, just doing like a whole event for like two hours before. And again, that gives people time that they can just kinda wander. Anybody that wants to stay can stay for the council meeting.
Does, um, does the little school have a band?
We could do that. There's, yes, we can do all kinds of stuff. So we have, we have just started planning that cause it's not until October.
Oh.
Um, but the reason is, you know, things could still get delayed.
Sure.
So, we don't know if the building is gonna be done. We had talked, when I had talked to, um, Garmin Miller, they said mid-September. Anything after mid-September, no, to do the, to do the event because we're still waiting for furniture. If something gets delayed, we wouldn't have it. But with the September twenty first already being planned out, we didn't want two events back to back, that week, the week before, the week after. So we are doing October twelfth for that and September twenty first. And honestly, I'm just doing this for the record, so you guys can put it on your calendars. Um, but we made sure there's not a council meeting on the twenty first and the twelfth is a council meeting, so we figured, we know some people can't be there cause they have to work. But, um, we would love for any and all of council to be there because I know we're all excited about getting the building done and, um.
What day did you say this was going?
That's gonna be October, the meeting October twelfth, the first meeting of our, not the first.
Perfect, cool, cool, cool.
Yeah, so, yeah, so there's that, um.
About vacation at the end of October, beginning of November, just wanna make sure I caught the date.
Yeah. Um, there, there's gonna, and he might have mentioned that the A E D grant, we have to move different things to be able to buy the A E D. Um, but we are getting an A E D for, we do not have any A E Ds in our cruisers or in the building at this point in time or the pool. Um, and that is something that we have all been, you know, that's something that we want to get for the new building, we want to get one for the pool and the cruisers. That is gonna be several thousand dollars, I'm not putting that in front of you, but we are, we did get a thousand dollars towards one right now and we are currently working on grants, um.
I can teach how to use AEDs as well.
That'd be awesome, that would be really good. So there is a lot that is going into most of these different things, but right now, one of the things I'm focused on is getting some grants to get some free money for. Um, there's a couple things the police department is in search of, um, and Tammy is phenomenal at doing that kind of stuff, so hopefully she can help do those. We've both been looking at the grants for the AEDs, I was, I worked with Morpsy, whatever day it was that I, I couldn't even tell you. Last week or week before, I met with them for a while, so they have a whole bunch of grant opportunities, um, for walkways and pathways and. Um, also said that they have, they have a, they have a place that we could go look for some different things for AEDs and some of the police equipment as well, so. I'm waiting for that login information, so as soon as I have all that. There you go. So there is, um, more than a million things going on right now. Um, and that then puts us to, we will need to have a, um, meeting to go over. The selection of the trash bid and or leaf, um, and then anything else your committee wants to do. And I'm hoping to do it like the nineteenth or twentieth of July.
I'll be there.
Um, only because those are two really good dates for me, but I don't know who's on that committee and I don't control that, so you guys all control that, but. If you want to do it sooner, that's fine, but those are just two dates that I'm pretty sure I'm open. And that's just because I want to get the legislation on the table for the very next meeting, that's why, yeah. So we'll send out emails after this, we can talk about dates and times, that way, everybody has to sit here. So that was my mayor's report in about thirty seconds or two hours. And I'm sure there's more, that's just what I.
All right, then, uh, let's go down, the ordinance is on the agenda real quick.
Go for it.
Legislation and then.
Just ask me questions, I might, I might not know the answer.
And some of these we've already talked about, right? So, uh, ordinance oh eight, twenty twenty-three, that's the stormwater utility one, we've already discussed that this evening. Uh, ordinance nine twenty-three and ordinance amending parts twelve and fourteen of the village code. Uh, this is the code or, this is the rewrite, uh, I think we're all up to speed on that. Uh, ten twenty twenty-three and ordinance making supplemental appropriations. Uh, fiscal office will check, we already discussed that, uh, and the last one's the tax budget. So those are all the legis- oh, no, and then there's the one that got sent out, hold on, this one here.
That's the Jordan Road sewer project.
Uh, yeah, and I believe we've already talked about that one as well.
That's all the legislation, yep.
Or that's, or that's resolution twenty twenty-three, twenty-four.
And then I will work on the legislation for the flock cameras.
Flock.
And then whether or not I need anything for that box, because I don't think we're gonna have any issues with people on that, and then the flashing sign, I'm gonna let you guys fight that one out.
Yeah.
Flock and then the other one.
I'll shoot them an email, hey guys, I sent you an email.
I'm not done.
Oh.
No, keep going.
I said I'm gonna send them an email about like, hey guys, you know, I sent you this email with questions, could you get back to me?
Okay. You asked the question about the AEP, so here's where we currently are with the AEP and electric and those locations. So you guys passed legislation, so I, and did it as an emergency, so I've already talked to, um, Bradley Electric. They are currently working with London Township because you have to go through the whole permitting, whatever, 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 and that's where it's currently sitting. So again, the location to get the electric installed there, which we can't do anything until we have electric installed there, is that. What are we doing from there? That's on you guys, so that discussion does need to be, um, do you want cameras, do you not want cameras? Who wants to lead that conversation, um, I am putting electric there because I was under the impression that we were going to put, oh, put cameras there, but I'm, that is not my battle to fight.
Elec- we're talking of the shelter house.
Correct, yes, I'm talking about the shelter house, there's many things that the electric can be used for, so I'm not saying if we don't do those. Um, this is, that, that's not my battle, I've always thought there was gonna be cameras there and then I know that there's now some people that do not. Um, but that's not something I get to vote on, so.
Who does all the cameras?
Some peo- I mean, I, I, I will be the first to tell you that I have had people call me and not appreciate the flock cameras or appreciate cameras anywhere. Because they feel like, and I just, I assume everywhere I go, when I walk outside of my house, I'm on a camera, so.
You're in a public space or what, privacy in a public space, whether we agree with that or not, that's what it is.
There, there's, there's legally established no expectation of privacy, one may still expect the privacy.
Yes. Correct, yes.
But there is no legal basis for that expectation.
So yes, I mean, so we've put the shelter, there's many residents that do want it, there were residents that wanted stop signs, we've done that. Um, we are in the, the other thing, and I don't know if you guys want to spend five minutes talking about this, I would love it if you would. Um, is there anything that you guys want to, we have still not ordered the sign for. That side of the shelter, are there any diehard rules that you guys want to establish for the, for the shelter? Um, obviously closes at dusk and no, you know, no guns, no drugs, no, no stupidness, I mean, I don't need that stuff, I mean, that's pretty much self-explanatory, but. You know, there's, there is still the discussion of, and I'm just gonna, reservation system or not, and we talked about it and. There is, and, yeah, you might have an old business, new business, that's still up for debate, um, you know, my recommend, my thought was, after we had talked about it and I've heard a couple people. And, you know, JP brought up a huge point, when we were talking about it is, you know, if you're having a graduation party, the shelter is small. Now everybody can really see that this is not a hundred person graduation party. Um, uh, it's always been established that it's for a little kid's birthday party, I mean, that's all this thing has ever been for, this hasn't been for something that people made it out to be. Um, so it's a very small shelter, I don't think there's gonna be some, you know, invites sent out for hundreds of people, but maybe somebody will, who knows?
I'm not feeling like a reservation.
Well, i- if you, if you wanted to have a graduation party, and let's say it is small, um, you want to send out those invites for two o'clock on July twelfth. And you get there and someone's already there, that's a problem, now you have your whole family showing up, so I can appreciate the fact of people that want to make. Plans to do something or if it's something that now, and we only have one current location, that might be something that changes in the future. So I'm not here to push a reservation system because that's gonna be a nightmare on me, I do not think you should do it, if you guys decide, please don't do it for more than the weekend.
How about allow but not require?
What about a courtesy system where we just have like a sign up genius that says like, hey, I'm planning on doing this, but like it's, it is what it is, like you.
I think so. So the recommendation from Recreation and Parks Committee is that we do not have a reservation system. So my thought on this is that on the weekends, if someone, if two parties show up. Both fully expecting to have full use and it's a problem, we need a way to help them resolve that problem. Right, because that's how the world is. Right?
And we don't have that right now.
Otherwise, otherwise it'll just be a problem and that problem will escalate in manners that will need to be addressed. One way or another. So if we have a system by which we can say, nope, this spot was reserved by Karen number one, not Karen number two.
I love the name.
Right? Well, and that's, and that's really, that's really the situation I.
Sorry, that was funny, sorry.
I foresee, right, that.
It's not funny, Tony.
Two people who feel they are entitled to the space.
Yeah, both residents, assume, yeah.
Will show up at the, at the same time and say, no, I've been planning this for months, well, I've been planning this for months and a half. And, and there needs to be a means to resolve it, or it'll be another means to resolve it, because they'll call the cops, right? And then the cops will have to tell them, they, they won't have any means to resolve it.
Either way, the cops are gonna come.
But, but.
If someone shows up.
But if we have a reservation system, then the cop can access that reservation system, because it's a Minerva Park cop and a Minerva Park reservation system.
I think our officers and our office staff have better things to do than we do.
I.
So we put up a sign that says.
I am just one voice.
First come, first served.
And, and the only thought to that is, is if you are doing a birthday party, I mean, maybe you have to get up at eight o'clock in the morning and go sit in it. And, and I, I mean, seriously, I'm not, I, I don't know, I don't know.
My idea is like, maybe, and I feel like we can do this even on Facebook, like, hey guys, like, I'm planning on blah blah blah.
But not everybody's on there.
Not everybody's on Facebook, not everybody, you know, as soon as, as soon as you post, hey, I'm gonna have my birthday party there. I'm gonna post, hey, I've been planning my birthday party there for weeks, I didn't know you could just reserve it by posting on Facebook.
All right.
Or someone does that and another person shows up and having not seen Facebook.
I feel like if we can have like some sort of like, I want to give residents the benefit of the doubt that we're gonna be like civilized people that like respect each other. And, I don't know.
And I, the thing.
It's not enforceable, just like as a courtesy, I think a courtesy would be nice, I don't think there should be an expectation of like. This means that this is set in stone and the cops are gonna be called if you don't like abide by it, but it would be nice to be like, oh, like. I don't know, the wolves are planning somebody's like birthday party on this day, like I have to work around that because I don't want to disrupt their celebration.
Well, and, and the thing that, that, the easiest way to allow for that is a reservation system.
So that's, just to let you guys know, that is, village is of Minerva Park's property, so that means we're responsible for it, not NPCA or anything like that. I thought when we talked to function, right, we kind of had the idea that someone calls down at headquarters and said, hey, I want it on this date for.
November seventh.
All right, well, that's, that's one way to solve the reservation system, you call, you made an appointment, it's written down, you can't change the dates, it is what it is, you're there or not. If somebody does have an altercation and the cops are called, that way you have that to say, otherwise than that.
The thing is, the argument is we don't have the resources in order to address it.
Or we can just say, you just have to share it, you just gonna have to share it.
Yeah, or share it.
That's, that's, leave it like that.
Or just first come, first served.
Well, it, it does, it goes back to the same thing, I mean, so if you do a reservation system, do you do it for half days, do you do it for whole days? Do you let people have it for the whole weekend if they want Saturday and Sunday, do you charge a fee, there's a ten dollar? I went through Wester- just so you guys know, I went through Westerville's policies, I went through Columbus, you know, Westerville has a lot of. You know, they do a twenty-five dollar reservation system, but then they give it back and I'm like, oh, that's stupid, I mean, that's another headache for our. Again, we aren't Westerville, we don't have a fiscal department, we have two people. Um, so I think, you know, I, I think where Jason's hitting it on the head is, again, we don't have a full. You know, you're, we're there from nine to four, so it's nine to three, so it's, they're not, we're not there on the weekends if somebody wants to cancel.
It has to be something that's automated if there's, exists that people get there and sign up, you know, with the login and all that kind of stuff.
Right.
And then put it in the, put it in the couple hours and you, you just have the rules for it, I mean, there are ways to.
It's like the birthday party one that you did.
There are ways to make it work.
Yes.
I mean, without major investment of our time and effort, you know, but I think it needs a little research, I think.
How about this, we just let it ride out for the year, it's about to be fall soon, right? We'll just do it right now, we'll do this, do first come, first served, if we do have problems, we'll, we'll learn from it and apply it next year.
There is, there's nothing there to draw people to it except for picnic tables, there's no.
Yeah.
Right.
That was my.
No, there's no grills, there's no.
And at this point in time, as somebody asked me the other day if we were putting grills in there, and at this point in time, my answer is no, I don't want somebody to burn it down. I'm just being honest, I mean, I, I can't stop somebody from bringing one, um.
I must try to get those grills at the park.
Yeah.
Seem gross.
Yeah, me too.
That's just.
So, so, I mean, at this point I haven't, so my, my plan or my goal, when, and I'm, it's not like it was my idea or anything, I know some people think that it was all me. Uh, but when we talked about it in planning and zoning and multiple different things, I mean, my view was it was going to be a, something for, exactly what it's called, a shelter.
Yeah.
So you can go in there, you know, if you're playing basketball and it starts raining or something like that, it's there, you want to go have a little kid's birthday party. It shouldn't be that stressful and I think that's, and I don't want to reinvent the wheel with it, but in the same sense, I can appreciate the person that does want to go over. And somebody else is already there.
You know, we have a beautiful new community building, rent that if you are.
Yeah, that's actually good.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, and we've got two months, it'll be.
Do we care about naming it or something?
There's no playground, what, the, the, the little shop.
I would like to call it, first of all, I think a pavilion is classier and I think it still sets the same, I think it actually is more true to what it actually is. As opposed to like a shelter.
Yeah.
Uh, so I think you're doing yourself a disservice, I think it's beautiful, I love it, I think we should call it a pavilion.
I'm not taking any credit for it whatsoever, I know there's a lot of people that think I like, all I did is got the prices and figured out, listened to actually what the, the ones that didn't want it, wanted.
Did you break out the style?
Yes, I did.
Then I will give you credit for, maybe we'll do more.
After listening to other people though, after listening to what other.
Yeah.
I'm here to have any southern view on it.
No.
We are not doing that.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
We, yes, I kept showing, I went through, the, the original ones had a back wall and a lot of people just didn't want that back wall.
You know, I love my reservations.
And so we, I, I took a thousand pictures at parks that I would go to, because they were, every park you go to, there is one. And that led us to that one.
I'd be willing to entertain the idea of naming it something.
Oh, I don't have an issue.
Or, or naming it an honor or someone or something, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that was.
I think the best thing to do is name it Minerva Park Pavilion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, think.
Old, older Mr. Connector Pavilion.
Something, yeah.
Right, let's, let's, let's.
What's it parked on, it's so classy.
Let's keep it, yeah, reserve, reserve H Pavilion.
Yeah, zero, zero, one.
Yeah.
Dash, five, seven, nine.
There is absolutely nothing wrong with that, I mean, most of them are, I mean, if you're gonna call it Minerva Park, well, that sounds stupid, Minerva Park Park?
Not boring.
That doesn't work, um, I mean, most of them, I mean, Minerva Park Pavilion would be.
Pavilion in Minerva Park.
No, you can't, no.
Oh, I just did, I will, I will vote no on any other name.
No.
And I will vote no on it, not the mayor Tiffany Sutter.
That's it. This.
See, there you go, no.
This is the moment.
Trust me.
This is the moment that you all saw me becoming reasonable, I will vote no on every name other than the park.
I can appreciate that.
The Park Pavilion in Minerva Park, that's it.
Well, I will say, and.
What are you reading?
I will say that it, it does, it was, it exceeded my expectations.
Sure, I just wanted to say, I would like to give whatever credit you will accept, I think it's beautiful and I don't think we should call it a shelter, I think it's more.
Pavilion, yeah, and I do agree with that. Um, but yeah, if we could get a sign or something like that, that said Minerva Park Pavilion, I would not be opposed to it, so. Um, but is there any rules that people really?
No drugs.
I think, I mean, I'm, I want to take the basic rules that are already at.
Like, like I need to inject my, uh, my insulin while I.
Oh, my gosh.
I'll inject insulin, yeah. Cannot inject heroin.
Illegal syringes.
I want to take the original rules from the basketball court that specifically say, um, closes at dusk. You know, the basic ones, no guns, no drugs, no, clean up your trash, um, but is there anything else that people want it to say, I mean?
So, my, my only thought there is the last time we, we looked at rules for parks, we had a lengthy discussion.
Yes, we did, do you guys want to have one of those?
I, I feel like.
Cause we started it in his committee.
I, I, if, if Recreation and Parks has a recommendation on it, we can just look at the recommendation, or.
Okay. I'm not gonna order it then yet.
We can have, I, look, I also don't care that much, right, closes at dusk, clean up your mess. Can be fine, but all I'm, I'm just trying to remind that the last time we drafted the rules that are over at the basketball court.
I wanted to beat my head.
It was multiple, multiple conversations and multiple sessions with multiple redrafts and.
I'll send you the list. I'll send you the list and that way on your next Monday meeting, which is not this month next, um, we can revisit it. And that way it doesn't say anything about, because one of the questions on there is that I pretty much stopped is. Does it say reservations required or does it say anything and that's kind of where I stopped because we don't have that answer yet. Other than that, I just, my view is, don't do this, don't, don't be stupid, I mean, I just, I know you can't just put that, but, you know, no guns, no drugs, no, you know, whatever. So, um, no alcohol.
They're just the same old rules that were.
Correct, very similar.
All, all the same, in fact, that would be the quickest shorthand, right, all the same rules, except for the ones that are specifically about.
Correct, that was my plan.
And that's fine by me.
Yeah.
I think we can, my concern was that one, one set of rules was labored over and the other set of rules was kind of getting put together slapdash.
Yeah.
So if we want to just use the labor that was previously done, that's fine.
That's what we'll start with, because we'll order it from the same company, that way they look the same.
That's the discussion we are.
Oh, then that's.
Yes, so, but we'll send it out to everybody, I mean, we'll work on that this week and then we can talk about the next meeting and, and go from there, okay, I'm done. I, I've had, that was my only.
Uh, any old business?
Probably have a million.
The only thing I wanted to add is like if we're gonna, um, do the stop bars and things like that, I think there's a resident complaining about, um, a, a part of Jordan Road that. Needs to be repainted, basically.
Yeah, it's on Facebook, the, the yellow midline striping at Jordan and, uh, in Cleveland.
No, I didn't.
Yeah, it's just.
It's awful.
Let's just add that in there.
Yeah.
Um.
Is that old business?
That's just our new.
Media business?
Media, yeah, it's.
I had called for old business, like, there have always been stripes on roads, so I guess that makes it all.
Yeah, I was just making sure that you're.
All right, any other old business?
Um. I want to say, I want to revisit the car road, but not right now.
Did we, sorry, did, what was the, were we having a discussion tonight about the maintenance though? Is it going out to bid or where do we go?
So at this point in time, it's in Mike Flickinger's hands, he is working on, um, several different avenues, not several, we're, we're, we've basically determined that there are no options. I mean, we are, we are moving forward, Mike is going to, again, this is the whole bid thing that a lot of people don't realize that. Yes, it, it's gonna require us to go through him, we have to have the documents in order to be able to put it out to bid, then it's gonna take twenty-one days. Again, the timing is not the problem, it's getting the bid documents together and getting people to bid on it. Um, we might actually go out, um, I believe, don't quote me on this, but I was thinking that one of the things that we needed to do is go ahead and do the soil samples and different things to make sure. To determine actual location of where it's gonna go before we can even send the bid documents out. So there might even be some like work that's getting done before that, um, so to answer the one question, are we working on it? Along with everything else, yes.
If we're, are we moving into business now?
New business.
So. Huh?
Whatever.
Oh, do you have something?
Yeah, one.
Okay.
So something that has come up in some conversations were, uh, around how long it takes us to react to. Uh, code violations.
Yes.
That by the time we send a letter, then we have to wait so many more days and that's all part of our legislation. So I'm wondering if we can talk at some point about maybe shortening some of that time.
So that.
So that it's not fifteen days before someone cuts their grass.
So the quick answer is if you read our legislation, basically they have, once it's actually where it needs to be, go ahead.
Right, so if I made it, so, so grass, so if you read chapter six, they go with the grass, so six sixty-five, I think. The, we did this a few years back, so they get a letter and the letter applies to the entire growing season, right? So, because what we run into a lot and in a lot and in all of these files that I've served in, it's a big problem where you've got people wait till they get the letter. let the grass get a foot plus, probably two feet, right? And then they mow it, and it's a hot mess, you know, when they mow it, right? Okay, so to stop that shenanigan, we send them a letter once in the, in the growing season. They don't, and it says very specifically, if you, if we have to go through this again, we're not renoticing you. Right, we're just gonna go send the contractor and cut your grass, or, or we have our own staff to, this place we don't have our own staff.
But it's twice. You actually have to give them the first warning and then it's the second warning. Yes, it is. We actually went back through and revisited it. They get two, they get two warnings, yes, and Tony's shaking his head too.
In event the owner, leasing agent, tenant, or other such person having charge or care of any land parcel or lot within the village does not comply with the order to cut or destroy the weeds, grass, or undesirable vegetation, or trim the trees or shrubs within the time limit specified, after a product, proper notice to abate the violation has been issued by the village, the mayor, village administrator shall cause such undesirable vegetation to be cut or destroyed. Trees or shrubs should be trimmed and may employ the necessary labor together with any cleanup required within appropriate appropriations previously made by the council. This remedy is in addition to the penalty provided here. The village does, shall not be responsible for damage done. There is no amount of time listed.
The first one is, no, but they have two warnings before they actually.
No.
You have to cite them first, you can't just go cut somebody's grass.
It says after the notice. So written, written notice shall be served by either of the following methods.
Correct.
Right, delivering the notice by the mail. Or publishing the notice once in a local newspaper or general circulation. So we, we recognize the, the grass is over six inches.
Now keep reading.
We send them a certified letter. Or a notice, we don't even have to certify. Or, or, yeah, we send them a note. Certified would be, you know, the one.
Does it actually say only mail or in the newsletter?
It says first, first-class mail. Uh, it says first-class mail to any of the owners, leases, tenants, or persons uh, taking care of the land, posting the notice by affixing it to the front of the.
There you go, okay, that's what I wanna make sure.
So I didn't, yeah. From the street, building in clear view from the street or affixing it to a freestanding post or stake in clear view from the street.
Yes.
So there is not a second, oh, okay, hold on. Here we go, I'm backing up because I, I started a little too late. Uh, in order to cut and destroy the weeds, uh, so you give them the notice and they have five days.
Yes.
A statement to the village or designated contractor will complete the work requested after the fifth day. So they just have five days.
Six sixty-five oh six. Six sixty-five oh six B says the mayor may abate subsequent violations without the necessity of further notice.
Right, right, right. Yeah. That's what we, we adopted that specifically from the other municipalities that we.
Then John doesn't have that because John is saying they get a second one.
No, 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 I, I'll.
Because he went to somebody's door after the, after the fifth day and they slammed the door in his face and told him.
We'll get that corrected.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I thought I had this conversation last year, we'll get that corrected there. There's no, we modeled this on all the stuff, obviously with their law firm, when we did this originally in power and brought it forward in multiple municipalities, works wonderfully because once they, once they don't do it, once they don't do it, we don't have to tell them a second time. We just go and vote if they're being unconscious about it. That's, that's our bill.
But, but.
But this is also only grass and weeds.
Right, right.
So if it's junk in the yard.
Right, oh, yeah.
If it's other kinds of violations, that's not, this is only grass and weeds.
And it's a huge issue right now. I mean, it's, I mean, even as much as I don't go on Facebook, the two times I've gone on there, that's what I've seen. So I don't go on the other ones.
So we'll, we'll, we'll make sure John is clear on it and we.
Yeah, I'll make.
We have, in the past, what we've done is we've appropriated money for a contractor and the contractor just gets called and goes out and abates it. Yeah, that's what we've done in the past when we have problems.
And that is five days after it's already out of control.
So is that the?
That's, that's the first time.
Right.
Once it's beyond the six inches, we go and pick it up beyond it on the end.
Correct, yes. That I knew, that I, that I was totally, and it starts all over again next year because we have a person that does it every single year. And pushes it until you can't anymore.
So that's just a misunderstanding with how office.
Right, we'll, we'll, we'll take your.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
So you, so you mentioned it doesn't apply to other stuff, does that include things like RVs and boats?
So when we have, when we, yes, so when we have other violations of the code, we have, we have to go through process, which generally will start in mayor's court here and other places. We have to go through the confidence, court of confidence, common confidence. But in this case, start in mayor's court and we have to go through the abatement process there. We have to get, we have to lead it up, we gotta go get the order to do so. Yeah, but the process really starts with the.
Citation.
The citation, right? Now, one of the things that we have hemmed and hawed, you know, this coun- council in the various versions I've been on has always hemmed and hawed with is the balance between neighborly and enforcement, right? Because, you know, you'd, you'd rather approach someone neighborly and say, hey, here's the problem, please fix it, right? But then how long do you give a person after that to fix it? Right? And you also have to apply those things the same for everyone, otherwise it's not fair. And when you go to, you know, a, a infirm little old lady and say you need to move the junk in your yard, it's a different problem for her than it is saying for me.
Right.
Or, you know, the able-bodied family across the street from me or so, you have to make those rules fair for everybody.
Right.
Well, and I, I, I'm just, if it's in the street, that becomes a police issue. If it's in the driveway, it becomes, um, it's more of a code enforcement issue. We had an issue with someone complaining about something that was in the street. And long story short, she didn't have the ability to be able to move it because there was a situation, the husband ended up leaving.